We'll call the city council meeting for Monday, February 3rd to order. Clerk Thompson, roll call.
Mayor Calvin, Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Mesky.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmik, Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Thank you. Is there any proposal or stand for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Councilman Mesky?
I would like to add a 13E under my report today, the city administrator's search.
All right. Anybody else? Get a motion to approve.
Some more.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, that carries. Consent items. Clerk Thompson?
Can I ask you to maybe put, use the mic a little closer? It's hard to hear.
Okay.
Thank you. On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of January 21st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of January 27th, Caris Health, Rice Memorial Hospital Board minutes of December 4th, an application for exempt permit from the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation Prairie Lakes Chapter, Parks and Recreation Board minutes of January 15th, appointment to City Hall Task Force for Councilmember Audrey Nelson, reappointment of Tom Gilbertson to the Parks and Recreation Board, council payable report for January 1 through 29, council's acceptance, the Wilmer Lakes Area CVB Board minutes of November 19th, and for council's information, an application for appointment to Human Rights Commission of Rebecca Shaleen, and an application for appointments to the Park and Recreation Board of Chloe Quinn, the City Hall Task Force minutes of December 3rd, 2019.
Move to approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that carries. We have a couple of, three hearings, public hearings. First one is consider ordinance deleting and replacing city code, chapter 5, article 4, enacting a sales and use tax and motor vehicle excise tax. Finance Director Okens, open the public hearing.
Mayor Pro Tem Fagerly, members of the council. The city of Wilmer, in the last legislative session with a citizen grassroots effort, was able to adopt and, and get a local option sales tax with the help of Representative Baker and Senator Lang, who are here tonight, too. So, when the city was working with Representative Baker and Senator Lang, we were using a model ordinance that the Department of Revenue had used in the past, and we were, used that ordinance in our two previous local option sales taxes. Since we adopted that ordinance in June of last year, the Department of Revenue has come up with a revised model ordinance due to some of the legislative changes that happened in session. And in working with City Attorney Scott, the Department of Revenue had requested that, that we revise the ordinance, use the new model. The new model basically would do three changes to the ordinance that was adopted in June. The first change would allow, and address changes with retail sales for internet-dominated sales, that was an item in a lot of discussion. This delete all ordinance and working with Attorney Scott, that would be his recommendation to delete the previous ordinance and just replace it with an entirely new one, which would address these three issues. And again, the first one was dealing with retail sales with the internet. The second one would insert a section that would automatically change the city of Wilmer's ordinance to comply with state statute if there were state law changes in, in sales tax law. The third one would provide for the excise tax for vehicles to be collected directly to the Department of Revenue and not through the city of Wilmer like it had been in the two previous. It just makes it easier for the retailers to file, when they file their sales tax, to do it all with the Department of Revenue. And so, tonight, you have before you a delete all ordinance that would replace ordinance 1436 that was adopted back in June. And again, those are the three actions that would happen, and we would be looking for two actions. One would be to adopt the ordinance, give it a number, publish, and the second would be to motion to publish the ordinance in summary form after the hearing.
All right. Is there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing, bring it up to the table. Also, what would you like to do?
I'll make a motion to approve the motion to adopt an ordinance deleting and replacing in its entirety city code, chapter 5, article 4, enacting a sales and use tax and motor vehicle excise tax.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say, well, it is a motion, but it will be a roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one zero nays.
All right. And then if we want to consider publication by summary, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, this will be a roll call, and we need six affirmative votes.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right. That ends the first public hearing. The second one is ordinance granting access to multi-unit housing structures on certain private roads by United States Census Bureau employees. And Clerk Thompson, this is yours, and I'll open the public hearing.
Mayor Pro Tem Fagerly and members of the council. According to the state demographer's office, renters are the most likely group to be missed in the 2020 census, and the renting, renting households are more likely to contain historically undercounted individuals, and people in rental, rental housing are more likely to live in multi-unit buildings, which are difficult for census enumerators to access when they're trying to follow up in-person or non-responding households. Several cities and counties are adopting the set ordinance to ensure a more accurate count for their communities, and at this time, we're asking for the residents to, if they have any input on the ordinance, otherwise, staff would recommend passing it.
All right. Is there any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and bring it to the table here. What would the council like to do?
Motion to approve the ordinance granting access to multi-unit housing structures in certain private roads by United States Census, Census Bureau employees. Second.
Further discussion? Sean?
Just a comment. I mean, when you take a look at what they're talking about as far as numbers, Minnesota is on the cusp, and we could lose a seat. So it's very important that everyone gets counted in that census. My understanding is Colorado would like to take that extra person. So hopefully, this helps.
All right. So Clerk Thompson, so the census takers go out into the field, and if they go to an apartment complex and the manager says, you can't come here, is this what this ordinance?
This allows the census workers to come inside the buildings, whether they're security or not. They are granted, they're granted access to all, all of the units.
Okay. So if they're still denied, do you have to contact the local police or the sheriff's department, or get a?
I would defer that to Attorney Scott.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, that is correct. This ordinance makes it unlawful to deny access to a multi-unit housing structure. Any employee that is denied access in violation of this ordinance, it would become a law enforcement matter. That would, a complaint would need to be made to the police department.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Now, this is a motion, and it's a roll call also. Clerk Thompson?
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
We need a motion to publish this by summary also, if you choose.
Some more.
Second.
And this is a motion, roll call, and we must have six affirmative votes also. Clerk Thompson, or Sean?
I didn't do it on the last one, but I'll do this one. Now, we do summary this way, that everyone knows that it is available in its entirety on the city website, as well as the city hall. So if anybody wants to see it in its entirety, it is available.
All right. We just take it for granted now, because you brought it up.
I know, I know, I know. I wasn't doing my job. I thought, there's two of them here in a row, so I'll get the second one.
All right. Clerk Thompson?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right. The third public ordinance, or public hearing, is to rezone a certain property from I-1, limited industrial to general business, and this will be Ms. Swedberg.
All right.
I'll open the public hearing.
Perfect. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, tonight, we have the last step in our rezoning process for property out in the industrial park along Industrial Drive. I will mention that Bargains and Blessings is here, representative. They've diligently attended every single meeting necessary to see this through. As a quick recap, Planning Commission originally created this commercial corridor to the industrial park back in 2018 to allow a daycare center in this industrial zoned area, opening up the opportunity for these type of services to be provided to industrial park employees and the business owners out in this area. The Planning Commission was again approached to extend this commercial corridor to include additional properties with buildings and land characteristics that lend themselves to commercial use rather than industrial. So the commission reviewed, held a public hearing, and approved this request in December and January, and it would be staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance to rezone certain property from I-1 to GB, assign it a number, and publish it.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Just state your name, and if you live in the city, limits or not.
Do I? I'm Edith Ryder, and I'm a founder of Bargains and Blessings, along with my partner Becky, and I live in Wilmer. We are very excited to look at the building we're looking at, and just to have it rezoned seems like it's a door opened for us. Bargains and Blessings is very much about giving back to the community. We like to employ people that have a difficulty finding employment, people that have come out of addiction or out of incarceration, and that's a big part of what we do. And we also like to give back to the community. By each month, we sponsor a different nonprofit based in Candy Ojai County, and then we give our proceeds to that organization, and it changes every month. We have run out of space where we are. We're just, the response of the community and donations has just been overwhelming, and we do no longer have it in space, and so going from 12,000 square feet to 80,000 square feet is like, hallelujah. So, thank you for your consideration and looking at this, and we're hoping that we can move forward if this changes for us. So, any questions?
Nano?
Oh, thank you for your presentation. I was just wondering, could you list some of the nonprofits you've helped over the last year, six months? Do you recall?
I can think of some of them off the top of my head. Hope Pregnancy, Community Christian School. Does she have to say her name?
She should, yes, please.
Hi, I'm Becky Zonder Van.
Welcome.
Co-founder, thank you. We have had The Fortress that we've sponsored, Hope for Our City, Hope in the Night.
Atlas. Hope Pregnancy.
I'm trying to picture our board. We have it posted in our store, so everybody can see who we give to each month and how much.
EWO, Elderly Widows and Orphans. So everything is based here in Candy Ojai County. Some of them have, there's four a year that we do that are overseas, but they are based here in our county.
CCS is what we're sponsoring this month, Community Christian School, and then Women at the Well, which is a jail ministry here in Wilmer. It's been fun to see the different ones that kind of have popped out of the woodwork, so to speak, because we weren't aware of all the nonprofits that were in our community. And it's been nice to be able to be the fundraising arm for them, and to let people know what is available in our community. So we've, we feel really honored to be able to do this, and we see ourselves being almost a place where we can work with more of the other agencies that help people in need, and kind of be the hub where we can kind of connect people with what they need. Lots of dreams.
Lots of dreams, big plans. We'll be back, because we'll have more crazy ideas that you guys will have to approve.
Possibly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council here.
Move to approve.
Second.
If there's a motion made, and second, and this will be a roll call also. Clerk Thompson?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Number nine, update on upcoming legislative session with Senator Lang and Representative Baker. Welcome, guys.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, so I guess, again, Senator Andrew, Representative Dave Baker. Thank you for inviting us tonight. It's been a while since I've been in front of the council. There's been a couple of new faces that I haven't seen in the past in this setting. So I'll just, you know, I'll give you a rundown of what I serve on in the Senate. I got elected in 2016. I currently serve as, let's see.
Look at me.
A long list. It ends up being a long list in the Senate, because there's half as many of us, so we end up spending a lot more time in committee hearings than the House does, I like to say. I sit on both AG committees, both the Finance and the Policy Committees in AG. I sit on both Environment Committees, both Finance and Policy Environment. I sit on Legacy, I sit on the S.A.M.s. I am the Vice Chair of the Veterans Committee, and just recently, I was assigned or allowed to be on the state's EMSRB Board, the Emergency Medical Services Regulatory Board, which happens to be the only regulatory authority other than the legislature in the state that has that ability. So it's kind of a unique system. That just started, I've only been to two meetings, I don't know a lot about it, but... So a preview for session, I've learned in the three years I've been here, that a preview for a session is kind of like trying to predict a Super Bowl. You never know what's going to happen, so I don't try to do so, so much. I took a couple of highlights on what Republicans came out with what they called Vision 2020. I didn't come up with the name. I don't think they went too deep to dig up for Vision 2020, but whatever. So, you know, there's a couple of things with healthcare. Healthcare is always one of the top items we're going to talk about in the legislature, especially lately, when it comes to some of the pricing transparencies. And that's kind of the focus on what the initiation from the Senate is going to be, is some of those pricing transparencies. I personally have a bill myself, there's several that I've seen from one side or the other that have to deal a lot with. People are going to be knowing what they are paying for their prescription drugs and for their services, especially emergency medical services. You know, and Dave, if you want to add anything to that specifically, I don't know.
You know, again, it's about transparency, and in the second year of a biennium is about policy enhancements, and we really try to dive in a little bit deeper, because we balanced the budget last year. We spent a whole bunch of money and got our agencies funded fully, and the schools, and all those important things. So this year is our year to do the bonding bill, and we've got a policy that we dive into deeper. As you remember last year, the way they ended, it was a very, I think, a poor ending to the session, because they'd kind of, very few people went into a room and got a lot of things done quickly, but they've set aside a lot of policy. Some of it was really bad, some of it was actually pretty good. So we've got to bring some of that back this year to kind of re-discuss it, because there's a lot of things that go into a clean energy bill, and a lot of things that have a lot of issues on both sides. So we have a lot of work to do to kind of clean up last year's stuff. All the bills that have been introduced last year are still there, so we're going to continue to work on that transparency.
And as a legislature, I would say that that's probably a good plan, to do it that way, separate the money from the policy, take the time that the policy needs, to have the discussions, and make sure you're doing the right thing. So, again, always on the top of our list, transportation funding. So what are we going to spend on transportation? Last year, I think we had a $6 billion bill, it was a significant investment for Minnesota Roads and Bridges. Obviously, I've always pushed that, especially in rural Minnesota, some of our townships that are really hurting. We have township bridges and roads that need to be updated, and they don't have the money to do it. Specifically, last year, I had launched a bill that is $22 million for townships. I'm pushing that same bill again this year. I have a pretty decent commitment. The commissioner's been really good today, myself, and actually, Representative Miller, for the most part, she's been very active, especially with the Highway 23 Coalition and some of the money that's been dedicated to that. I'm going to try to call it corridors for commerce, even though it's really not. I'm going to stick with that, because I think it truly is. That, that is, it's going to be a big ticket item. One thing that didn't make it through last year is Section 179. If anybody knows of farmers around here, the depreciation schedule that they've been using for years, we wanted full federal conformity last year. I carried the bill, made it through the Senate bipartisan through the, no question, everybody knows what it means. It's just the thing, when it comes down to the end of the session, it's got a big price tag on it, to get those farmers a relief that they need when it comes to their equipment. So that's another big thing. It ultimately failed. It was a dollar item at the end.
It's one of those items that was set aside, because again, I think we're hearing that that's a top priority of the Tax Committee this year, on both the House and Senate. I'm actually having Chair Mark Ward out to Wilmer here in a few weeks to meet with some implement dealers, farmers, accountants, to make sure that they say to firsthand to our Tax Chair, why this is so important to our area. And it is devastating to people buying large trucks and equipment, and if they can't use that same conformity like they do on the federal side, it, when you have a bad year, you have to cough up the money earlier, you kind of get it back later, but when you don't have the money, it's not easy to bring it up. So we've got to just make it more consistent.
The easiest way, I think about, you sell a $200,000 piece of machinery, you buy a 300, you pay tax on that, and that 200 as its income. That's an issue. If you can't appreciate that right away, it's an issue. So there's a lot of push for green energy, clean energy, excuse me, green, however you want to slice it up. This year, we have a pretty interesting bill that's coming up from Senator Ozmick and Senator Senjim of Rochester. It's a green energy first bill. There's a lot of good things in that bill. There's a couple of things I'm personally very fond of that is, for one, we start using hydro as a renewable energy. We've never done that in Minnesota. So hydro and nuclear actually is on that list, too. There's a couple of, and I've touched on this in meetings in the past, just slightly, that nuclear is one of those that, we talked about this morning in the township meetings, actually, where they're all, everybody's really worried about the nuclear waste, and for the first time in a long time, the power companies are looking at the nuclear waste, saying, I don't want to get rid of it, I want to keep it, because I think there's, we know there's 90% of the energy left in that, and I think there's a way we're going to do it in the next few years. So that's me not knowing anything about nuclear energy, just repeating what I've heard. So, Dave mentioned this a little bit. It's a bonding year. It's typically the year that all these projects and policies come out where we borrow money to pay for. This year, we have a $1.3 billion surplus. I'm guessing I'm probably going to get between $10 and $15 billion worth of ideas where they want to spend that 1.3. Personally, I'd love to see a bonding bill without any bonding. It'd be awesome to see a 1.3, just pay for it in cash and be done with it. I think that's a good way to use that taxpayers' money, not take out a loan for everything we're going to do, make, you know, debt service payments on that for the next 20 or 30 years. I think that would be great. Is that going to happen? Probably not. So you'll probably see a combination of things. I'd really love to see a strong transportation bill with some of that surplus. That's something everybody can kind of get behind, Roads and Bridges, right? And then, you know, just, just to speak a little bit, and then I'll let you talk about whatever you want.
You're doing great.
Talking along, but, you know, the right-wing, left-wing, Republican, Democrat thing that, we've worked really well with Governor Walz, and I, you know, try not to give him too much credit, but he's had a lot of tough curveballs thrown his direction his first year of office. I mean, we talked about MinLars, we talked about CCAP stuff with the childcare. He's been very good. The Department of Human Services is going to have a, they're going to have a tough session. They have a lot of Star Tribune articles written about them, and what's been going wrong within the DHS, and all the money we've been wasting. It's going to, it's going to be a, I would call it an opportunity for the governor to address some of those issues and work with both sides of the aisle to get, and I'm, I'm well, looking forward to it. I'm optimistic, I am. I'm, I think, I think the governor has shown that he is totally willing to work with us on both sides of the aisle. So that's kind of my two cents in the way that I think that, and there are, there's a, I should probably say that we're still working on the Benson stuff, the biomass plant that, that Dave.
A lot of folks got hurt on.
A lot of folks got hurt on. That's been one that, that was the gift I got in 2017, and 2020, it's still, still giving us plenty of fits, so.
And again, just to really kind of not repeat what Senator has said, is that we're very fortunate, Minnesota have a very strong economy. We've got great businesses doing a lot of smart things. Employment is at a record low right now on employment. Wages are going up. Our surplus, basically, our rainy day fund is full. We don't have to fund it anymore, because we've hit that peak. So what a great thing that is for the state of Minnesota. But again, we are going to decide how much money to spend on our, our infrastructure this year. It's a huge, huge issue. It'll be at least a billion dollars, and we don't know where it's going to end, but there's a lot of requests, and we've got a few of them around here. The Prairie Lakes Detention Center, right here in town, is on our bonding list, that Andrew and I are working on to try to put a motor skills area with some updated classrooms for the kids that, and they come all over the state of Minnesota here, judge and court-appointed to be here. They've made some bad choices, but they need a good facility to learn, and these kids need a chance. So the Cabs, the new Cabs Hospital that's being built over by the Civic Center, we need to do a gymnasium, a small gymnasium there, a playground, those kind of things, motor skill area. I know, I just, these, these folks, I think we all get what a gymnasium kind of feels like, but we didn't get the stuff right on the first bonding bill. So DHS came back, and we said we needed to do some of that. And then again, along with our, our Y project connection, we need a good, solid road project to finish that thing off, to make that industrial park the best it can be. And so that is the three main projects that I'm working on. Senator might have a few more outside of my district.
Yeah, there are a few small ones, but for the most part, those are actually the three that are on the top of the list, is actually real local here. It's kind of the way it all, the cookie crumbled, I guess, as far as the bonding bill goes, but those are top of the list, you know, the...
So, and again, as I enter my sixth year in St. Paul, I sit on education policy, health and human services, finance. Again, we're going to be diving into a lot of the DHS revamping, we hope. We want to make sure that the new commissioner is successful in her role. I sit on energy and policy, with so much energy issues coming up, again, with the green slash clean, everybody wants to call it something different, but we want to make sure that our, our power is reliable and affordable in Minnesota, and we want to do renewables. That's not a bad thing. We just have to make sure we have the right balance. So there's a lot of moving parts right now on that issue. So, there's a lot of moving parts right now on that issue. And again, I just think we've got a lot of things to do with getting things done better at the end of session. I wanted to make a comment on one Minnesota that all legislators are invited to, where they take a whole day, the speaker, the majority leader, they take a whole day and invite us all to the Hubert Humphrey Policy Center at the University of Minnesota. I'm one of four people that is trying to bring this to a new awareness, and we're going to do some breakout sessions, and we're going to do some polling with our legislators, our colleagues, because nobody's been happy for the last couple of sessions. It's not just the last one. We just can't seem to land this thing with the kind of ideals that we all have. I don't want to have three people go into a room and make these enormous decisions when we've been working our tails off all year and our voice isn't quite heard like we think it should be at those final hours of session, and that, we've got some new ideas to do this. And I hope that each leader, we have a House Republican, a Democrat, Senate Republican and Democrat, and four of us have come together, and we're going to try to do this in a way that hasn't been done before. So, we've got a lot of great colleagues that want to do this, but we have to find a kind of a new pathway, and we're getting leaders, I think. Our leadership is trying to really commit to this this year. So, I hope that this comes into be something that we'll see at the end of the session. I hope it works better, so.
And I would just add, in the Senate, what Dave's talking about is that, we tried that last year, the Senate, we moved up deadlines much earlier. I don't know if any of you remember how early some of those deadlines, first, second, third deadlines were, much earlier than they had been in the past, and we met those deadlines. And I would say at the end of session, I have to give a lot of credit to Paul Gazalka and the effort that he made. We were, we were in there. We knew what was going on in that room with four people, we really did. It was actually a good departure from what it had been the first two years. So, he is really trying, our leadership team within the Senate is really trying, and I think it's making a difference. Hopefully, it's an example that we're going to follow in the future.
So, with that, Mr. Mayor and Council, we'd like to ask questions. If you have any questions of us, we're here to listen to you, not so much take up the agenda too much. So, with that, Mr. Mayor.
I've got a couple of questions.
Shoot away.
I know it was representatives that came to the college this fall, you had a bus tour.
Yes.
And the county talked about the Y.
Yes.
Project Bridge. What's your feeling? What did the representatives think when they got back?
You know, there was two different tours. I know there was a Senate tour and there was a House tour. The House tour, I think, was at the, was at the college, and I think they came through and they did kind of both, the same tours. I will tell you, the House side, they were very optimistic about at least the two education, motor skills area. The bonding for the transportation is a different animal, I think. So, I think it's a good priority that has very good chance of passing, but that one's a little different, and I think it's going to be run through more of the Transportation Committee as well as bonding. It's all tied together. I would say that all three of our projects have a very good chance from the House standpoint. But all demand, what it all depends on is what is that big mother number that we have to finally say, what can fit in this, in this big credit card bill that we're going to run up? So, I will tell you, from the House side, our three projects have very good standing right now.
I would agree, and both the Senate and the House did do bonding tours. You know, everybody from the Senate had seen that the year prior, 2018, I believe it was. So, they had actually stopped out of the Y, took the bus out there, got out, walked around, looked at it. Mel Woodens did a great job bringing this all around. I would say that of my list of bonding projects, that's right up there, too. I'm not real, I mean, I'd never say it's a 100% guarantee, but I'm not real concerned about it, so.
With two good-looking guys like this, how can they say no to us?
Oh, they do.
Oh, okay.
And then, is there any discussion on not taxing Social Security for seniors, the Minnesota space?
Yes, there is.
A lot of conversation. It's one of the Senate's highest priorities in the Senate tax bill. It certainly is for myself personally. I just returned from Fort Myers, Florida, for a weekend away, and I will tell you, the Minnesotans I ran into, everybody wanted to talk about the taxes in Minnesota. I think we've all heard about it, but I know it's a huge issue, and it's hurting us financially. So, it's something that we'll keep talking about, but it's a huge price tag.
Absolutely. We're one of five states that does it. Very few states tax Social Security. We just recently, in the last four years, have done away with Veterans Pension taxing, also some of the State Active Duty. We've really gone down that military avenue. But yeah, Social Security is the next one on the list. That is way up there in the priorities with the Senate, with the 1.3 surplus. I think we at least take a good first stab at it, you know, take half of it away. You know, I don't know if you saw the Star Tribune article just the other day about how much tax revenue or income tax revenue that's leaving the state every year, it's about $900 million worth of income. We're not losing people, we're losing that income, so the inflow and exflow from the state is fairly even, or we're losing, you know, and it's not all high incomers, it's, you know, $50,000 to $100,000 that, you know, that's kind of the core of where our revenue comes from. So, it's, those retirees that are making 50 grand a year on Social Security, that's a big chunk of money, we're not going to pay tax, it's house payment, so.
Any other questions from the Council?
Just a comment, and I know I've talked to you both about this before, and thank you for lobbying for the projects that we have in our area, but there is a real pent-up demand for projects all over the state, and we will have more projects coming, too. And so, I hope that not just to come up with a total and say we're going to stay within the total, projects have to stand on their own merit.
They do.
And they need, and we're behind in funding some things, and so, when we have new projects to come forward next year, if we get pushed back three or four years because you haven't funded other things that are in there. So, to come up with a total before you come up with a project, I would hope that you would be open that it's not a flat, we're not going over this figure, and so, I know that that's a concern both ways.
That is the balancing act we play. The debt service capacity, I believe, is over $3 billion. I don't think that's a good thing, a good precedent for the state of Minnesota to say we could go over $3 billion. I just don't. I know there's probably some appetite for that in the House, so.
There's a lot of it in the House. But, you know, we only have so much to spend on debt service, and I think now's a good time to borrow money.
Yeah.
It's not a bad time. And again, we're lucky to have a robust economy here. We just, I think we're all just being very careful because we see the demographics, we know that the baby boomers are retiring like crazy, our human services are only going to grow. So, we only have so much that we can spend on certain things. So, I love what you're saying, Councilman Audrey Nelson, I just, I think it's making sure that we don't overspend too much or we get caught in a few more years. So, they all should be great projects if they get announced and pointed.
Right, and I think you make a good point. One, there's a movement within both Houses and probably the governor where you won't see the swimming pool funded in a bonding bill anymore.
Right.
Not like it used to be. That just doesn't pass muster like it once did.
Even bike trails that we just did a few years ago, you won't see much of that anymore.
It's just partially because we're going to use that money for transportation funding, and partially because Health and Human Services has taken such a large portion of the budget, along with education, and between those two, E through 12 and Health and Human Services is 80% of budget. So, there's a lot less of that pie that we have dispersed amongst other things. So, I think the, you'll probably see a little more meat and potatoes in the bonding bill.
Okay. Thank you.
Fernando?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I guess that's a comment. I guess it was good to hear that there's going to be cooperation between the governor and the majority Senate and the House. I think my understanding of hearing people talk, they don't see the Minnesota of old, where people were working together to build Minnesota. They were following party lines to do their agenda. So, it's nice to hear that there's a potential that the line's going to be blurred, and the goal is Minnesota. It's not this or that, it's Minnesota, and I think it's important to keep that in mind. So, I know, I know the people I speak to are tired of that line and not getting it done because we're not looking out for Minnesota, and I think it's important that we look out for Minnesota. Thank you.
That's a great point, and we'll carry that again. This is what we're hearing all over, too, is that we're just tired, and I know what's happening on the federal level is so completely exhausting to so many of us. I think we just want to make sure that doesn't happen here in St. Paul, and I think we're really trying to dig in deep and try to find better ways of doing it. I mean, the DFL in the Senate just had a major leadership change. I think they're, not to say that Senator Bach didn't do a great job, but just they all want some different ideas and different momentum. I think this is a good thing. So, we're just going to, we're going to do our very best, and I can tell you that I'm really proud of working with Senator Lang, and we've got that bipartisan approach to everything we do. And we just want to get our bills passed, we want to work with our colleagues on the other side. We know there's some times we have to compromise, and we don't want to compromise, but there's some real important issues that we have to do, especially, he and I are really plugged into the rural scene. So, rural Minnesota is what's foremost for us, so, yeah, but thank you for that comment.
No, and I've said this many times in the past, but I think it's worth repeating, is that oftentimes what the public sees is not actually what's happening in St. Paul. The political theater that goes on the floor and in front of the cameras and microphones oftentimes is not exactly the way it is when we're in back rooms talking to each other. And I just, hopefully, that gives you a little sense of comfort that, you know, there's been a few floor speeches where I've seen my fellow senator get off the floor, go to the retiring room and say, "Did you think anybody bought that?" You know, so, just to let you know, there is that element. There's 99% of our bills are bipartisan. I don't think I've really had, other than some very far-right bills that I know aren't going anywhere, I don't think anything that I truly have intention on getting passed and pushing it through the system that I wouldn't ask a Democrat to be on. So, it's, it's the way that business gets done. And partially, I believe that that gridlock that's oftentimes as frustrating as it can be is a necessary part of how the process works. If there's something that's that controversial that neither side can meet in the middle about it, maybe it should get passed at all, so.
Sean?
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for championing those local bonding projects, and I think that's great. I like the farm equipment depreciation ideas, too. You said there are perhaps a lot of policies sitting out there, and some are really good. You mentioned maybe one or two policy priorities that you have on the radar that might have most impact here locally.
Well, that 179 would be right up there. I mean, there is.
Big tent policy, yeah.
That is one. There's some, you know, kind of going down that farm route again, there is some right-to-repair stuff that I don't know if the Council, for the most part, is aware of how all that works, but in working with HOB locally and having several conversations with them, and having rights with, or conversations with farmers that are right to repair, I think there's some common ground there. There's some real concerns when it comes to manufacturers on what they should, how they cover a warranty when it's a personal repair and things like that. I think there's a precedent set with automakers across the board, so I think there's a way we could get with that.
I'm working on some opioid bill that's tweaking our big bill last year that passed. We've got some small things to change on that to make sure that we don't overcharge folks that were missed in our last bill. We don't want to make medical gases, for example, oxygen, high price, because in the current version, that got missed with the Board of Pharmacies, so we have to make some changes there. And I'm also just, I'm working on about maybe six, eight bills or so, but one of them is kind of reforming the way we look at addiction in the form of driving. And I want to remove the whiskey plates in Minnesota, because what's happened 20 years ago is we have something called the interlock ignition system. You can't drive a car if you've gotten a DWI without having that, so what we've done is we removed the safety part. So, if you're going to drive a car, if you want to get a license and after you've been given a ticket for this, you have to have this interlock system or you can't drive. I don't see the need to put a bumper sticker on your car that's public shaming. I don't think that's needed today, because an officer can't pull him over any longer for no reason whatsoever. And I've talked to our local sheriff, I've talked to our local police chiefs, the DWI task force, Mothers Against Dog Driving, they see that this is not needed any longer. So, this is something that shouldn't be a big problem, but it's a big change in the philosophy of how we look at that. So, those big changes, and I hope it makes it through this year, but it may not, but it's going to get conversations, because I want people to look at addiction differently. When people make mistakes, they have a chance to really kind of correct it. But if they want to drive, they have a safe way to do it, it's expensive to do it, but they have a way to do it, and I don't think we have to still put the W plates on their cars any longer. Just one of the ideas that we're working on. So, this is the year to kind of do things like that, that try to give us some new outlooks and maybe some new perspectives on things that we're doing for a long time. Governor Dayton used to call it maybe doing an un-session. This is sort of like unpeeling some things back, and why do we do it this way anymore? And this is one of the things I want to work on.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Senator Lang?
Thank you for, and thank you for letting us know when there's issues locally. I know that many of you have visited us in St. Paul, so thank you, we look forward to seeing you, and your voice is big there, too, so thank you for giving us the time.
Come see your office.
Thank you very much, yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, continue on. Public Works Safety Committee meeting, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The Public Works and Safety Committee met on Wednesday, January 22nd, at the City Office Building at 5:15. Members present were myself, Councilmember Ozmuss, Councilmember Alvarado. Others present were our City Administrator Gromit, our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our Fire Chief, Mr. Hanson, our Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Manzer, and Engineering Administrative Assistant Dobask. We called the meeting to order at 5:15. There was nobody present for public comment, so we moved right away into public safety updates. Those public safety updates and statistics should be in your packets, and now would be the correct time, if anybody has any questions, to raise and address those to either chief. Seeing and hearing no comments, we'll move on to our next item, and that was the wastewater treatment, WIMS data management system, and this resulted in a resolution. Just a little bit of background on this, this piece of software. The wastewater department currently uses a spreadsheet-based tool in combination with input sources created by staff to gather data from the system. The state includes supervisory control and data acquisition, historian, lab, and process data. It's then used to generate daily process control changes, lift station reports, monthly MPCA required, electronic discharge monitoring reports. There's a whole ton of fun acronyms associated with this, but they're really good at what they do out there, and they do understand it. The program itself started having issues and is very complex to fix, because in the past, staff did create this in-house, and they were quite good at creating a system that worked well. However, it's somewhat becoming antiquated. Staff did inquire with a company called InControl for a water information and management system, the acronym for that is WIMS, to replace the current spreadsheet that's used. The WIMS software gathers data from across the wastewater system to a central database location for a complete picture of the entire operation. The interface would provide automatic compiling of all the data and creates custom forms to allow staff to duplicate paper forms electronically. A motion was made and seconded to purchase the software from InControl in the amount of $46,500, and is my understanding also that that includes software setup. Is that correct? All right, thank you, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made to enter into a professional service agreement for the Y, or WIMS data management system to InControl. All those, or roll call?
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Pass it. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Next item on our agenda is a Public Works street sweeper purchase. This is a big ticket item, but it's also much needed, something that we've been planning on and trying to get done for a long time. Public Works is requesting the purchase of a 2020 Elgin Road Wizard mechanical sweeper per state contract pricing in the amount of $295,788.44, as listed in the 2019 vehicle replacement schedule. This unit is in addition to the department's current sweeper, which I believe is named Pelican, because it kind of looks like a pelican on wheels. It features a 5.5 cubic yard hopper, a dual steering control system, a 10-foot sweeping path, dual gutter brooms, and has a 360-gallon water tank for superior dust control. Couple of the items also noted, this unit is a little bit different in the past unit in the fact that it looks more like a truck. It is a, like a four-wheel, and I believe there's maybe a dually on the back, but it's actually a truck, so it can maneuver around the city with more speed. So, once it's full, if it has to drive someplace else, it can get there quicker. Also, there is a side dump that actually, I believe, hydraulically lifts up and dumps the refuse, so if they have waiting trucks, this piece of equipment can continue around the city much faster, so I believe the overall volume will be increased immensely. The capital outlay program increased, includes funds for the purchase of $300,000, therefore leaving $4,211.56 for taxes and licensing. A motion was made and seconded to authorize the purchase of the 2020 Elgin Road Wizard, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made to approve the purchase of the 2020 Elgin Road Wizard street sweeper. Are any questions? I have a couple. So, Sean, how old is our existing one? Is it 10 or 15 years old?
Council, Mayor Protem, I think it's 10 years and I think they're on a 15-year cycle, if I remember right, for replacement. And so this would stagger them.
So this one will be a backup, then, our old one?
Nope. We're going to use both of them. With 135 centerline miles, we need both of them.
Do we still have the old, old one, then, as a backup?
No.
We only have one now?
We only have one. That's correct.
And then is this exactly what we want? Because I remember when we bought the other one, they looked at one like this and then they actually test drove it and then they said, no, it didn't work like our Pelican. So did they improve it now?
They are completely different. Pelican, of course, being a three-wheel device and then some of the advantages this one has, I think by having both of them, we will accomplish everything we need to accomplish. The, we, the crew tested four different brands and styles before settling on, not settling, before choosing this one. And I think, yes, I think this is what we had set out to purchase.
Okay. So you'll use the Pelican and then this one will go behind it like a week or a couple weeks later or?
Mayor Protem, I would anticipate both being in different areas of the town at the same time.
Okay.
Is how I would anticipate doing that. I haven't, we haven't got through the scheduling yet, obviously, of the operators, but I would anticipate both going at the same time. That way we can cover the town in half the time, basically.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The next item up for discussion was the Civic Center ice replacement project closeout. And this is a long-anticipated project also that we've, we're all aware, we've been working on for quite some time, so this is a good thing. Cornerstone of Wilmer was awarded the project a two-sheet ice system and expanded resurfacer room for the Blue Line Arena, which incorporates an interior snow melt pit at the July 16, 2018 council meeting. Final quantities have now been reviewed by B-32 engineering and staff, and the recommendation is to authorize final project payment to Cornerstone of Wilmer in the amount of $104,245. And I will enter that motion now.
Second. We got a motion and second to pay off the work at the Civic Center, final payment for $104,245. Any other questions?
Am I reading this correct, then? Does this actually come under the total budget or the total, or the final contract?
I believe so. I'd like to defer to our Public Works Director.
Yeah. Mayor Protem, members of council, it did come under because of the contingencies we had, you know, with the, we had a couple of change orders, if you recall, and they were all within that contingency. So total budget, it did come underneath the total budget.
Nice to see.
Yes.
Further questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Our final item of the evening that will require action tonight was regarding the 2020 improvement report. In accordance with Chapter 429 of Minnesota State Statute, an improvement report is required to be formally received and an improvement hearing is required to be ordered by the City Council for the 2020 improvement projects. The hearing explains the proposed improvements and allows public comments to be received on projects to be assessed. The list of streets and other improvement projects for 2020 has been prepared and the report explains the proposed improvements and the estimated costs. Motion was made and seconded that we accept the report for the 2020 street improvements at the committee level and order the improvement hearing from March 2nd, 2020 at 7:01 PM. I will enter that motion now.
Second. All right, we have a motion made to receive the street improvement report for 2020 and to call for an improvement hearing for March 2nd, 2020 at 7:01. Questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There being no further business, we did adjourn 6:29 PM and I would motion to file the minutes.
Second. Got a motion to file the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next we have the Finance Committee report of January 23rd, 2020. Since Audrey was sick that day, I will do the minutes.
That's great.
We met at Monday, or Thursday, January 23rd, at City Hall at 5:15. Present was myself, Councilmember Plowman, and Councilperson Osmus, along with City Administrator Brian Grammets and Finance Director Steve Okens. Item three was discussion for the council. It was a report on outstanding indebtedness. Staff presented the 12/31/19 Report of Outstanding Indebtedness, which is required to be filed with the county annually with a total of bonds outstanding of $117,969,051. It was noted that the airport bond is scheduled to be paid off this year on 2020. Further, Baker Tilly has conducted review of the city's debt, showing a recommendation to also do an early payoff of the 2011 improvement bond if the council chooses. Debt service funds are available for this bond. Exceeded the amount of the current outstanding debt, this is a result of assessments being paid off early by homeowners as well as some excess construction funds left over that were transferred into the debt service fund. There's also potential to refinance a few of our other bonds to reduce interest rate. Some of these are through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. Staff will be discussing refinancing possibilities with Baker Tilly and PFF in the near future. Next one is primary preliminary 2020 bonding levels and action requirements. Baker Tilly's bonding review also included analysis, information for use and planning for potential upcoming bond issues, including the City Hall project, local option sales tax projects, et cetera. Various funding options and timelines for these were considered also for review, including sales tax revenues and staggering future bond issues. Since some of these may be larger bond issues, new bond ratings will be required, which take into consideration the city existing levels of debt, overlapping debt among the school, county, and city, personnel stability, population growth, et cetera. It was noted that the best possible rating is AAA and the city's most recent rating was AA3. As projects and financing possibilities come together, staff will be compiling a calendar reflecting the financing process to be reviewed with the council. And fund balance policy review, the current fund balance policy was provided to the committee for their annual review. Finance Director Okens presented a brief overview of the various fund balance information. He noted that the Community Investment Fund hadn't previously been specifically addressed in this policy and is recommending that it be added. Copies of their charter addressing the Community Investment Fund were distributed to the committee members, explaining that there are certain requirements established for this fund that need to be met. Proposed changes incorporating the charter verbiage regarding the Community Investment Fund into the fund balance policy will be brought back to the committee for approval at the next finance meeting. And then the investment policy review, the current investment policy was provided to the committee for their annual review. Staff is working with Bremer Wealth Management on possible recommendations. This policy will be discussed at the next financing committee meeting. There be, there was no further business. We adjourned at 6:23. And if there's no further questions, I move to file these minutes. Second. Any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries. Next item is Labor Relations Committee meeting. Councilmember Mesky?
The Labor Relations Committee met on January 27th. All of our regular members were there. The first item on our agenda was the 2016 Springstead recommendation. For that, I will do my best, but if I have any gaps, our HR director will have to chime in. In 2016, we had Springstead, we hired them for a salary survey of unrepresented employees, supervisors, department heads. Due to the lack of, due to the breakup of the union they had previously been part of, the recommendation pay schedule was adopted with four changes. If you take a look at those changes, you'll see the middle column that is highlighted in yellow, there are a couple of blank layers there, and that's what this time of, they call those open pay scales, they were not implemented. And so the city administrator moved up a pay grade and the police chief and public works director were moved down one pay grade from those recommendations. Since then, the public works director position was re-scored and moved up two pay grades in 2017, but the police chief position was never re-scored. Also, the 2020 wage increases for the chief position should have been reevaluated to remove any pay compression issues. And after we had a discussion about that, and obviously we have a whole salary issues across the city moving forward, but since this was the one issue that we were looking at, there was a motion made to approve re-scoring of the police chief job description, and I will make that motion now.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider re-scoring of the police chief job description. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, that carries. Councilmember Mesky?
The next, it's information, it did get into your packet, but we are going to examine that farther. We had individual policies coming forward. There's just a few edits, but I think we were handling those as we had done with all of the previous ones. So perhaps prematurely put in the packet, is that correct? Okay, so it's there, so everybody can take a look. If anybody has any comments on any of those, we would welcome those at the Labor Committee. We will not be, I'll share this later, too, but we'll be meeting again on February 24th. So you do have some time to take a look at those. And if you have any comments, please send them to Labor Committee. The next piece was the consideration of the fire department job description updates. And for this, and again, if I mess this up, I'm looking for Fire Chief Hanson, if you want to chime in if I mess anything up, but we had job descriptions for two battalion chiefs, a department safety officer with more defined duties and one for operations. And both these positions have a large responsibility within the department and we had lots of questions about what they actually do and how they'll improve, but they're essential in maintaining a safe environment. With the elimination of the paid-on-call assistant chief and paid-on-call deputy chief, an additional duty is an adjustment of an additional $800 for each of the battalion chief's yearly stipend was recommended. And that was a motion that was made and approved to come to council this evening, so I will entertain the motion to update the battalion chief's job descriptions at this time.
We got a motion and a second to update the job descriptions for the two battalion chiefs. Any questions? Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'd just like to compliment Chief for including the additional information in the packet. That was fantastic, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries. Councilmember Mesky?
And now with the job description change, now is the annual stipend change. And so the, if you read in your packet, there is the annual stipends of $6,600 for the assistant chief and $2,950 for the paid-on-call deputy chief. Those budget, those are covered within this budget, so the increase for battalion chiefs would come from those monies. And so I would bring that motion to adopt the resolution to increase the battalion chief's annual stipend at this time.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to increase the battalion chief's annual stipends? Any questions? All those in favor, or this is roll call. Clerk Thompson?
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Oops, sorry.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Councilmember Mesky?
All right, the next item on ours was the concession of the pay equity submittal. And if you look in your packet, it says that the city is required to file our pay equity report every three years and our 2019 report is now due. We conducted a preliminary audit in September of 2019 to assure the city would be in compliance. The city in utilities updated our records with all changes from October to December and that report is ready for submittal. Springstead's preliminary report shows the city passing at all four tests. The preliminary report was submitted in order to meet the January 31 due date. However, the report is subject to any updates or clarifications as needed, so we revise if the council finds it necessary to do so this evening. But we did discuss this and we made the motion out of committee to approve the pay equity implementation report and submit completed report to MMB. And I will introduce that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to submit our pay equity report? Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Number E, Councilmember Mesky?
All right, the next item was, we had a discussion about the city administrator search. It was, as information at the time, at the Labor Committee, however, at the Labor Committee we said that there could be a contract for consideration on this Monday's meeting. We did receive that. Just a little background, we, of course, employed Baker Tilly for our search company, if you will, that's helping us with that search process. And we're proceeding with that process and we've get, we're gathering candidates and we have met, and I think all of you have met with Patty from Baker Tilly to talk about those things. However, in the interim, I've been approached and saw Patty from just about every council member and there's many people from staff and so on, the possibility of retaining the interim city administrator. And so we were going to do our due diligence as a labor committee to see if that was a possibility. One of the pieces of information that we wanted right away was an evaluation to make sure that the priorities of the council and how we view the job of a city administrator with our current interim, if we had some congruency with that. And those results have come back. You have all received them on the council. We'd have to do a closed session meeting and talk about them further, but to be quite frank, there's probably no need to do that. They all were exceeding things and we can say that the council and the city, interim city administrator are definitely in congruency with many of our initiatives moving forward. And so with that engaged, we then pursued the possibility of a contract with our interim city administrator. I will tell you that a lot of glowing attributes, if you will, and I'm going to try to be careful to not do anything I'm not supposed to do. However, the experience on local option sales loss projects, local option sales tax projects, City Hall Community Center, the stability it brought to our city staff, interpersonal skills, I will tell you, for lack of better terms, the ability to quell discord, in my opinion. Bringing new sites and years of experience prompted me to follow the wishes of the council to see if there was a possible contract agreement that we could have with our current city interim administrator. And so with that, I know there was a series of questions of the legality of that contract. We passed it off as a labor committee to the city attorney and to our HR director. I will thank them for their work before they speak. I will also thank some of the members of this council who were part of some of those discussions with our interim city administrator. And I will also thank the mayor for his assistance as well. A lot of things had to come in place. What you're going to hear tonight, and you have all seen the contract, if you wish to proceed with our interim city administrator, that is the contract. If you do not wish to proceed with that, then we will proceed going forward with the original plan that we have with Baker Tilly. So this is the opportunity, if you wish to stay with our interim city administrator, it comes with a contract that you were presented. So I'll let the city attorney and HR director, if they have some comments to share with you regarding that, that will be great. And then it'll be in our corner, if you will.
I just had some comments I wanted to make sure I addressed, and it's on your cart form as well. But the total compensation package is in complete compliance with all required laws in Minnesota statute. There would be a starting sick and vacation leave bank that's also spelled out in your contract, and that is in recognition of the almost eight months he's already served here and accrued no paid leave at all. And vehicle and full allowance are also things that are consistent with what's offered to similar city employees. So if there's any other questions, I can answer. Otherwise, I think I addressed all the comments that came with the contract originally.
Any questions from the members there?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing signatures on the employment agreement with Brian Grammets to serve as the city administrator.
Second. Further questions? Further questions? Audrey?
Not quite sure how to, maybe it's more of a question. I am supportive of moving ahead with the resolution for this employment agreement, but I do think in the process of our review of preparing for the administrator's search and even in the review of the evaluation that we did, both of our, that he did and we did, I believe that we have some work to do to make a commitment to help, help our administrator be successful, both at the council table and, I mean, all of us together. And so my concern is, yes, I want to approve this contract. I believe strongly that, that he is positioned to help us be the most successful in our future. I'm, I'm pleased that he is willing to consider being here. But I do think that this council needs to make a commitment to how do we help our administrator to be successful and to engage with both our staff, council, and mayor. And so that's more of a question to me of what are the next steps after we approve this contract? But I think it's an awareness for me that just approving the contract is not sufficient to help us take the next steps to be successful.
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, I would also agree with those comments. I think it's upon us to not only choose the correct individual to hire or offer employment to, but also to find, identify, and try and enhance and work on all those areas that we know need to be worked on. And I believe that, I firmly believe that we found the right individual to also help us do that. I think that's one of the things that a good, experienced city administrator can also help and aid in. So I'm excited about the, the possibility of this being approved. My question now is, with regards to Baker Tilly and that whole process, how does that go? Where, which direction do we go there?
Councilmember Meskey?
I have talked to Patty and she had, we had her scheduled for a set job to do. She said if she does not complete that job, she will be prorated pay of what she has completed. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I was.
Because she said she, her job was to get us the best city administrator that we could get. And she was of the mindset that we have that person probably already sitting at the table. And so she said if, if her services are no longer needed, that she would be done when we have the best city administrator, because that's what we hired her to do.
Okay, if I may. So we have no further financial commitment above and beyond once, if, if we do make a decision, then we have no continuing financial commitment?
I don't know what it would be, but it would be coming to a conclusion very quickly.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
I think we're both trying to say the same thing, and I don't know what our, I mean, I understand her commitment to us and what the, what was in the contract and those types of things, but I think some of the things that we worked on in the process of going through that with her still need to be reviewed by this council. And so that's more my question with next steps for the council, whether she's involved in this or not, or, you know, we had talked about reviewing the job, the forms that were filled out. How do we do that? And how do we work to make a commitment, whether that's with her or without her? I just don't want us to approve this contract and say we're done.
I will say, I mean, I don't want to get into the salacious, you know, things that'll make a headline, but if, this council, our mayor and staff, all of us, have been called to move this city forward with the city administrator Grammets in place. You've seen the pieces that we personally have to live up to, and I don't think that you would have a city administrator, interim or otherwise, who would be able to call the council, mayor, and staff to say, this is what I have observed and I would like this to change. I don't think he would take that job and let that go. And to be quite honest, nor would I, because that was, you know, sometimes when you get that criticism personally of our role and responsibility in that, I applaud that, and I'm very excited about changing that, that discourse and making it turn. So I, I think that's what you're saying, and I don't think that we're going to let that go away, because that, to me, was very impressive, if you ask me. It displayed what experienced leadership can give you, so I, I think it's great.
Other questions? Let me just say, I've enjoyed working with Brian. He brings a lot of experience, and he's done more in his seven, eight months here than, sorry to say, we've done in five years, so. And I think he's got the enthusiasm to help us. He likes working on these big projects, and he's going to do a good job for us. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I just wanted to be very clear so the council understands what it's, what it has before it and what it would be voting on if it votes on this resolution. I had distributed a draft of this contract on Friday afternoon. That draft had a few comments that our firm had made that required some further vetting today, that vetting has taken place, and we have determined that this contract is completely legally compliant and working with Human Resources Director Beckman. So the draft that you have before you has not changed at all, the substance of it has not changed from the draft I sent out on Friday. So what you have before you is a contract by which you would be appointing Brian Grammets to be city administrator on a permanent basis. The terms and conditions outlined therein, I can certainly answer any questions the council may have, but just so you know that the, nothing has changed in the document since Friday.
All right, we got a motion to approve the contract with our interim administrator. You do this on a roll call?
Resolution. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That carries. Congratulations. We expect big things out of you now.
Mayor Protem and city councilmembers, I didn't prepare a long speech here, but I, I do want to say that I do appreciate your confidence in me and that I, I plan on working very hard to meet your expectations and will provide a, a supportive role for the city council as, as administrators should, and that I hope to provide the leadership for the department heads and the staff as well, as the community moves into the future projects that we have before us and even past those. So, thank you again.
Let me just say, just because we're elected, if you see that we're doing something wrong individually, you can contact us. Doesn't matter if it's the council or the mayor. We have your back.
All right, thank you.
All right.
There was nothing else that came before labor, and so with that, I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
All those, or any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Councilmember announcements. Andrew?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Fernando?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think it's important as a community that we start talking about the census sooner than later. I think we have to talk about the importance with our neighbors, with our friends, with our, our church groups, with everybody in our community about being counted, because this is going to impact our future for 10 years. And it's education. It's education about the importance of the census. And I, I think when April 1st rolls around and it's Census Day, I think it's important that we, as, as Clerk Thompson has shown us, we're a leader in the community, and I, I think we should be a leader in the state of Minnesota on the census. And I think it's important to start getting educated, start talking about participating in the census, and, and Wilmer should be a leader for the state on this. So talk to your friends. It's very important. It's going to be money and representation, and this is a big deal. So please, 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 talk positively about it and plan on being part of this. Thank you.
Vicki?
Nothing for me.
Kathy?
I'll pass, thank you.
Sean?
I will pass.
All right. Next was mayor's comment. He is not here. Let me just say, our prayers go out to him. He's in Rochester with his son, so we wish them the best. And announcement for council committee meetings and Public Works.
It's my understanding that engineering is very busy preparing information for the upcoming road construction season, so we will not be meeting this week, but they are busy at work, rest assured.
Finance?
Finance will be meeting Thursday, February 6th at 5:15 at City Hall.
All right. Since Dave isn't here, Sarah, no meeting for community development. All right, thank you. And labor?
There is no labor meeting this Tuesday. Our next one will be the, two weeks after that, so our next is February 24th.
All right. Thank you all. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned.